Call our meeting to order tonight. Betsy, will you call the roll, please?
I'd like all board members out of attendance this evening.
Okay, thank you. Next item we have is the approval of the agenda. You all have seen the agenda in your board packet tonight. I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented in your board packet.
I move.
Thank you. And a second, please.
A second.
Lisa, thank you. And call the roll, please.
Carter?
Yes.
Cough? Yes.
Maddox? Yes.
Peter Meyer? Yes.
Weisel? Yes.
Worley? Yes.
Nusis?
Yes. We have several things coming out of closed session tonight. We're gonna table the first on the May 20 closed session minutes. We're gonna table that to next time while they're amended. Let's see, we have a motion, I need a motion then to approve the superintendent's recommendation regarding closed session minutes for the last six months, which is all minutes and that they are to remain sealed. That's December 17, 2012, January 7, 24, 28, February 25, March 11, and 18, April 14, 22, and May 1. I need a motion to approve that recommendation.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lisa. And a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Rick. Call the roll, please.
Maddox? Yes.
Peter Meyer? Yes.
Weisel? Yes.
Worley? Yes.
Carter? Yes.
Cough?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes. Next, I need a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation regarding audio recordings older than 18 months, which is to keep the audio recordings of closed session minutes for July 25, 2011, August 22, 2011, September 22, 2011, September 26, 2011, October 17, 2011, November 7, and November 9, 2011, November 10, 2011, November 14, 2011, November 16, November 20, December 12, 2011, and to destroy the audio recordings for October 26, 2011. Need a motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. And a second, please.
Second.
Thank you. Brandon, call the roll, please.
Peter Meyer? Yes.
Weisel? Yes.
Worley? Yes.
Carter? Yes.
Cough?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes. Any motion then to open, superintendent recommends that we open the closed session minutes for October 26, 2011, and December 12, 2011. Need a motion to that effect? Thank you. Brandon, and a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Rick. Call the roll, please.
Carter? Yes.
Cough?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer? Yes.
Weisel? Yes.
Worley? Yes.
Nusis?
Yes. Last item coming out of closed session that I need a motion to uphold the recommendation of administration to dismiss Jason Norris for performance issues. Need a motion to approve?
I move to make that.
Thank you. And a second, please.
I'll think of that.
Thank you, Lisa. Call the roll, please.
Carter? Yes.
Cough?
No.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer? Yes.
Weisel?
Yes.
Worley?
No.
And Nusis?
Okay. Next, we have our item of 5 dot 1, and that is to open up our budget hearing for discussion of our amended budget for 2013, and you've got some information in your board packet. And Mr. Murphy?
Betsy, could the June PDF, the first link? The only difference between the draft document of this that we shared with you in May and now is we've updated some of the construction numbers. So we added, we included the bond sale, so those are reflected in revenues for the capital projects, and we expect there may be a few more bills still coming in in June. We wanted to make sure we were authorized to pay. Majority of those are certainly gonna come later, but the only difference between what you saw last month and this month is just additional expenses in the capital projects, which we already have the money for from the bond sales. So it's exactly the same. May was, came out at or below my projections, and we're on pace in June so far, too. So I think the recommendations to increase in a couple of areas that we talked about last month are still on track and should cover our expenses. Any questions about that, or you're not taking any action at this point? This is just for information.
I have a question. The deficit reduction plan that was included for this month is an integral part of the amended budget, correct?
Yeah, I was gonna talk about that next.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Betsy, the last link. This is not required by the current numbers that are presented in the ISBE budget. This is a deficit reduction plan. It's a three-year plan. It's part of ISBE's form. It's not specifically required for the budget. It is required for us to actually approve as part of our amended budget because it was an audit, it was in our audit that was presented to you this late, this early spring. So this most recent audit had a note in there that it found that there should be a deficit reduction plan, and it was to be filed with the 2013 budget, amended budget, which is the one you're looking at tonight. So for you is simply that, a plan, taking into consideration the current budget, the discussions that occurred this last spring about some of the reductions in staff and the reductions in expenses throughout the district moving ahead to next year, and trying to project that forward for a couple of years to give us a goal, to give us a plan to try to follow, based on trying to hold those expenses pretty level. And we certainly never know what the revenues or situation is gonna be. So in this plan, it really holds the state revenues pretty flat and the federal revenues pretty flat, and it only seeks a moderate or minimal local increase, because it's really one of the only places we can, we would have any control moving forward, is to seek local funds. We won't know what the state's gonna do, and we won't know what the feds are gonna do from year to year. So we just hold those numbers flat moving forward. So it's pretty conservative. We'll certainly revisit this when we present you a budget for next year, the FY14 budget in the fall. When we present that, we'll certainly revisit this and modify those numbers as we can. But this is a piece of the overall budget that's required per the audit findings from the most recent audit.
Okay. Any questions?
Hi, it's Sergeant Patrick. When you look at receipts, Menards, I know, comes online for tax purposes. Is that reflected in there?
That's part of the overall EAB. So when we're requesting our taxes and our levy process, we will, we're seeking, we're hoping that our EAB will continue to grow. It has grown every year, although this last year didn't grow quite as much as we had anticipated. But it still is growing, and so that would be a way to offset where we're gonna be seeking additional local revenues. Where the difference would be felt is on the homeowner. The more businesses that would come on the books, if we're seeking more money, then the, there's more money in the pot from those other companies, and there's less that the homeowners have to pick up directly.
Anything else?
Actually, I have a couple of observations, one of which is to reiterate Steve Cough's comment last month that it's a serious situation financially for us because we don't have the safety net. And being, being required, and that's what it is, to file a deficit reduction plan means that this ISBE is requiring that we submit a remediation plan, which is what this is. I think it should be taken very seriously by all members of the district and board. It basically, I believe, requires a paradigm shift in everyone's thinking that we now have to ask ourselves, do we spend the money on X, Y, or Z, or do we make further progress on getting out of a deficit reduction plan? I cannot overstate how this changes the outlook of our district until we get out of the deficit reduction plan. The other thing I would like to note is that the ISBE form requires that you submit a narrative with this, with this report, and that narrative is very important because it asks questions like, if you don't receive an increase in revenues for whatever reason, what are your contingency plans? If, how are your reduced revenues going to affect meeting your educational goals? And other very important questions. To me, the narrative is a very important part of the deficit reduction plan document, and as it stands right now, I will not feel comfortable approving it with the amended, with the amended budget. Furthermore, it's always preferable, since it's been included in the previous year's audit report, to begin, the beginning balances with the audited balances. So in any event, you know, I, I wouldn't, I don't take this lightly. This is going to require very careful thinking from henceforth, so.
Just to clarify, the numbers on there, while the form may say estimated, that's ISBE's form, I can't change that cell. Those are the actual audited numbers from the audit, the June 30, the July 1 numbers.
Did you change it?
I did.
When you asked.
Okay, so it's no longer 7.9 million?
The one that should be posted is not here, is the one that has the actual audited numbers for beginning July 1.
Oh, 8.
But the form will say estimated because that's still their form.
But that was updated recently?
This morning, today.
Today? Okay, well, good. Then, that, I, that was updated today, okay. Do you, did you include the narrative then? Did I miss?
No, that part is not here, not knowing any direction or any discussion about the report, which will be helpful to help me finalize that narrative, but that's not.
Well, the narrative is a very important part of this, this required report, because it really requires all, all areas of the district to get together and think about how these numbers will impact how we change our plans. The numbers, oh, excuse me. Carrie, can you address what the district is currently doing to the questions of the narrative, or how we would answer those?
Yeah, I mean.
Who is responsible for writing that narrative and the information that goes into it?
Well, and it can mostly reflect what we have, you know, back in February, all the budget reduction that you planned on, and then in the future, and those are reflected in Patrick's numbers, and it, you know, the, as you know, those budget reduction numbers were actually at a 3.1 million, and actually reflected in this, Patrick put a 2.5, you know, reduction. So he's, like, he kinda mentioned that it's a conservative estimate. So, yeah, that we can reflect what we've done to this point and then future changes. It's difficult at this point because we don't know, you know, too much about what our revenues will be to know how deep to have, we'll have to look at, but absolutely, I feel like we've done quite a bit.
Well, okay, there is one very important sentence here that says, discuss the extent of any educational courses and services which will be reduced. And I'm just saying that there is a very important part of this required form that I believe board members should be, should know about, besides just reduction in certain areas. There's also analytical questions that need to be included. It's part of the report, not merely just changes in numbers. So on that note, I've completed my observations.
Any other questions?
This comes from the audit, Patrick. Correct.
Let me just say that I think, I think all board members take this very seriously, and that the administration takes it very seriously also, because this does affect our, our rating as far as borrowing money and the way we pay it back and that sort of thing. One of the things that this board and fut, and former boards, past boards have always stated is that we will, any cuts that we make, we try and impact our students as little as possible, to make sure that our students have what they need to be successful, not only in the district, while they're here in the district, but also in their futures, both in college and, and the jobs that they choose to go into. So it's something that, that we've, everybody, I think, takes seriously, and I think that, you know, this, I wish the state took it as seriously as, as the individual districts do, so. Okay. And then, anybody in the audience have any questions on this also? It's one of the.
I have, Jim, I have one last one.
Sure, go ahead.
On the summary, Patrick, am I correcting that? And this goes to the work that Carrie's done already, but 1213 shows us an estimated ending balance of 7.6 million, 1314, 10, 1, 1415, 137, and 1516, 7, 17686. So as we observed last year, that the ship doesn't turn around overnight, but we've done a lot of work to turn this, and the cuts that we've made will take a while to show up in these types of summaries and plans, because the budgets are set so far in advance, so it takes a while to turn the ship. But it appears that everything starts to come together as planned, there's progress to be seen.
Yes. District, the board has taken much progress to turn it around and to go in the right direction. It's gonna take a cycle or two before you're gonna see significant change, I believe, as long as you continue down that same path. But it's gonna take a while to show. This is a plan, and if we can keep those expenses the same and hope that revenues maintain at least at level 100, then this is a plan that we could model and hope to follow.
Any other questions, comments? If not, then we'll declare that our meeting is over, our budget hearing is over, not the meeting. But then we go on to 5 dot 3, or, I'm sorry, 5 dot 2, and.
Do we need a motion to close the hearing?
Pardon?
Do we need to close the, a motion to close the amended budget hearing?
Is that on there? Do we need a motion? We didn't have a motion to, yes, we do, I'm sorry. Motion to then to close the amended budget hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. And a second.
Sir.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Weisel?
Thank you, Lisa.
Worley?
No.
Carter? Yes.
Cough?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer? Yes. Nusis?
Yes. Right, then now moving on to 5 dot 2. Need then a motion to approve the resolution for, can you pull up the resolution there, Motion then to approve the resolution for the FY13 amended budget and forward it to the ISBE. Need a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lisa. And a second, please.
I'll second you.
Thank you, Linda. And call the roll, please.
Worley?
No.
Carter? Yes.
Cough?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer? Yes.
Weisel?
Yes.
Nusis?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Patrick.
Next, we move on to communications, and we have some young ladies here with us tonight that Mr. Lee's gonna.
Thank you for waiting patiently.
Yes, thank you. That was something we had to do at the beginning of the meeting. I know it was very educational.
[laughing].
[inaudible].
Very patiently.
I'm not gonna say much. I'm gonna turn this over to Coach Light. June 1 was an awesome day at Glenwood, and not only we graduated an outstanding class of seniors, but these juniors brought home the first ever girls' state title in soccer. So I'd like to ask Coach Light to come up and say a few words and recognize his, his players with some certificates, and if his assistants would help hand them out, then he'd be great. [laughing]. Big old trophy sitting right down there.
Yep. Why don't we put that trophy right up on top here so everybody can see what it looks like? Because it probably is one of the biggest we've got.
Just a couple of things, I'll be very brief, not to take away from their accomplishments, but just very, first and foremost, any credit that these, in my opinion, these go to God first and foremost. There's blessings in my life and in these girls, the stuff that's been played in front of us, and opportunities that just could not happen without him. And as, last year, we were fortunate to come and visit the school board, and with a little bit of a bad taste, I think, in some of their players' mouths, and they definitely use that throughout offseason, through this year, and played, did what they needed to do to get even better. So just an outstanding season, they accomplished many, many things as far as growing off the field, just as much as the accomplishments that they did as far as winning the trophy. So great, great group of girls and coaching staff I had to work with, and just very proud of all of them. I think they represented the community and the school very well throughout their seniors, throughout their careers, and the other girls the last, this year especially. Well, north of I A, they don't really necessarily believe that we can play soccer. Hopefully, it's a little bit more.
They know now, yes.
That's right. You girls showed up.
They should've known last year, but.
Yeah, so.
Good job.
Two of my coaches are here tonight, assistant coaches Kyle, Frankie, and Greg Light, and they're gonna come help me hand out. So girls, I call your name, just come up with your certificate and line up across here, so we can get some pictures. Mara Kinnon. Reeve Kaufman. Madison Volker. Macy Cotler.
Great job.
[inaudible].
We need to hold the trophy. You guys hold the trophy?
[inaudible].
More metal players stand.
Okay.
They can like men.
No, we're, we're on a platform.
[inaudible]. 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 Congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
[inaudible]. 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 Okay. Get rid of some stuff here.
Okay, moving along. Carrie, we've got some other good news reports.
We do. The next item is Mrs. Larson, do we have anybody here to, okay.
[inaudible].
Yeah, I didn't know, I didn't want to make sure we didn't have anybody to stand up. Is the SOS Award, again, national champs for our fifth graders at GIS, which is an online internet surfing challenge that they take, and just, you know, shows that our students are responsible, and, you know, it's, it's just a really nice thing to see that they continue to do very well. We've had that before, and then we've also had some second places in the past, too, but that's quite a, quite an accomplishment for fifth graders to win that national championship. And I think 6-3, we're holding it tight.
Oh, 6-3.
Didn't show up. Oh, I'm sorry, mine didn't refresh. Okay.
Okay.
Sorry. My screen didn't refresh. Yes. So congrats to them.
Yeah, and I think we, our kids have done second or first other times or other years down the road, so.
Continue to refresh.
Yes.
[inaudible]. 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 [inaudible].
Okay. Got you. Okay. Well, thank to them, great job, again. Next, we have an opportunity for visitors to address the board concerning any agenda topic. Does anybody wish to address the board concerning? Come on up and tell us your name.
Good evening. I noticed on the board agenda today that, or this evening, that you're going to be asked to approve settlement with former superintendent Gillum, and I have that right here. I guess I'm here to ask you to vote no on that. My reasoning, well, let's just say I had a page full of facts and reason why, and I decided, hell, if you guys don't trust me by now, it, not a middle matter anyway, so I just want to say that, you know, as an outsider, it looks like we have our former superintendent under investigation for things important enough to hire a forensic audit. And it looks like you're considering letting him walk away for $16,100, plus losing health insurance he was never supposed to have if not for the reopening of his contract. Hell, the audit most likely cost more than $16,100. I guess I'm, I'm making the case that either the audit was done when it shouldn't have been at taxpayer expense, or in my opinion, somebody's being misled here at taxpayer I just don't believe it passes the smell test from what I can see. I don't believe this agreement would be in the best interest of the community or the school. And I ask that, just ask that all the current board members make sure you fully understand what you're voting for tonight, especially bullet point number four. In my opinion, that's a, bullet point number four is huge. So I'm respectfully asking you not to approve the settlement this evening.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board? Okay, moving along. Go to our consent agenda items. We have consent agenda 7.1 through 7.16. Let me make sure all of that's staying. Yep, okay. Is anyone who wishes to pull anything for individual consideration, 7.1 through 7.16?
I don't know if it should be pulled per se, but I wanted to get a little bit more information about 7.9 and 7.10 before I...
What's your question?
Okay, my question is regarding the two-year appointment of the district's treasurer for Ball Chatham Education Foundation. My question is, they are a separate organization. And they make that clear in many of their activities and fundraising. And typically, organizations such as this hire their own treasurer or they have a volunteer treasurer. So could you please explain how the arrangement of a paid district chief school business officer is providing services to Ball Chatham Education Foundation?
Carrie?
Well, that's not part of his compensation. You know, it's not one of his duties as CSBO, but he's volunteering to be on that board. They do have, they do have, they request in their bylaws and how they're structured, they ask for representation from the district so that it's clear that their mission aligns to ours. That's why you would appoint someone also from your, from our board, you know, you would, not from your board, but you would appoint someone as a board of education to that committee so that your wants are kind of aligned to what they're spending money on, is your foundation. So, do you want to add something to that?
Well, may I ask, maybe I could direct the question to you then. Patrick, do you do this during district school?
No.
This is the voluntary, this is the voluntary effort on your part? You don't, you don't attend meetings during the workday?
Their meetings are in the evenings.
Meetings are all in the evenings, just like these are. Meetings are in the evenings. The board, the way the bylaws are set up, when I wasn't here when the foundation was originally established, the language is that this board, that wherever board is in place at the time, will appoint X number of members to serve on the foundation's board. And those boards all have an equal voting right. So everyone, whether they serve in a capacity similar to yourselves, you may be on the board, or you may have a president, you may have an extra seat as a vice president, you may serve an extra capacity on that board. The foundation is set up similar, there's a president, there's a vice president, there's a treasurer, there's a secretary. And then from the members that are there, the directors that are there, whether they're community or school members, but the directors all then are voted and nominated to serve one of those roles. By having been nominated to be the representative of the district in one of those director positions, and then also been asked by the other directors, would you serve in the finance treasury? So any of the directors could, any of the directors could pick up that responsibility. It just has fallen that...
That's my, I'm, here's, well, first of all, in my understanding that has been given to me, you know, on, trying to get an understanding of this, is that the Ball Chatham Education Foundation is a separate organization. And it's not affiliated with the district per se.
I think you're talking about the PTOs.
No, I'm talking about the Ball Chatham Education Foundation. Because...
It is a separate organization.
They are a separate organization. They have the 501(c)(3) status.
But there was some question about PTOs and how connected they are to us. Okay.
My question is, are, and you might find this, you might find this an unusual question, but do you use your personal time that during, you know, that, do you use your personal time after work hours to serve as the treasurer? Just like Brandon Maddox, you know, does his board work after hours? Or do you do a lot of the preparation and, for example, maybe the completion of the 990? Do you complete the 990 for them?
I file all our information for the foundation with the added the support of our auditors or our inform, but I file information for the foundation in my capacity.
Well, this is where I'm getting concerned, that I think working as an affiliated district employee on a foundation is less important than having district, and you might question this, but once again, these lines are getting blurred. And the 501(c)(3), I believe, should have a citizen representing the district prepare these 990s and filings and...
I may, if I'm not reappointed, and that certainly is board's choice, there will leave a vacancy of a district employee that is to be appointed by the violence. So some other district employee will still need to be appointed at some time because you'll leave a vacant seat then on that director's chair.
I should on their board as well.
Right.
But, yeah.
Just so you know, I mean, that's clearly if your priority is the board.
It's so important, though, Patrick. I want to preserve your time.
How much time do you think, can you estimate? How much time do you spend?
Each, it fluctuates because there's certain events that peak. You have the Titan track that's in the fall, so there was registration and things went up to it. They're actually looking this year using a line registration. That will certainly alleviate much of what's come through me as the secretary or treasurer for the foundation. But it's still accounting for the reconciling and accounting for the bank statements and everything. So there's, it varies, it comes and goes. For some months, it's a little heavier, and some months, there's very little. So it's just a...
This is done on your time, too, is it?
The occasional things have to still be done during the day in business hours, just by the sheer nature of them. There's some of those that just have to occur, but...
This is not taking away from district activities.
It doesn't ever take priority over anything I have to do in the district.
And how long have you served on?
You need a break if it's on your personal time, Patrick.
We don't have personal time.
How long have you served on?
Let's be honest. We're salaried, we work every, you know, we work when we have to work.
And how, how many years have you served on there?
Two.
And it'll be an additional two.
Since I started here, there are two, they're assigned two-year terms.
Yeah, Laurie Niemeyer did before that.
And then, correct.
Okay, and Susan, you had a question about 7.9?
Well...
Institutional member?
That's fine, no, it's really only 7.10.
Okay.
So I'd like to pull that from the consent agenda, please.
Okay. So 7.10 is pulled. Anything else? Anyone else would like to pull anything from 7.1 through 7.16? If not, then I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in your board packet, minus 7.9.
No, minus 7.10.
I'm sorry, 7.10.
I got a question about 7.13.
Okay, okay. Go ahead.
Is this work at Glenwood Elementary?
For the additions.
For the addition.
That is additions also?
First Dave, oh, there's Dave, can you hear that?
Which item?
7.13.
7.13, alarm extensions at Glenwood Elementary School.
Another 26,000 worth of alarm work at GES, was that?
The fire alarm recall in Glenwood School.
GE, Glenwood.
GE, Glenwood Elementary.
7.13.
Is that for the addition, or is that for the brand-new building that just got built?
That's an extension of the existing system into the additions.
Anything else?
Is now appropriate time to talk about the information in there, or is that something we want to talk about later?
Information where?
Putting more clarifying commentary in the background, should we do that?
No, you can do that now. Go ahead.
Dave, I just have a favor to ask. In all these resolutions that are coming across about the additional, like for instance, the George alarm stuff, that's apparently within a line item of a budget that we approved for the additions.
That falls into the FFLE area.
Right, well, I mean, you guys clarified that for me today, but it would help me a lot if within this information that you're describing it...
We put the scripter together, we tell you exactly where the funding's coming from.
Where it's coming from and what line item it's under. That would be awesome.
Well, correct.
Okay. So, and just for clarification, too, on that, that's the same for Ball Elementary, and it's the same for GIS. And the extension of the PA system, it is, my understanding is the same there, that it's already, that's for Ball. No, I'm sorry, that's not for Ball. Yes, it is for Ball. That that would be part of that also. And the last item, the phone hardware software extensions, that's the same thing. Chad and I talked about that today. So, okay. So then, again, I need a motion, there's no other questions. Need a motion then to approve 7.1 through 7.16, minus 7.10.
Somebody second.
Was that Brandon and Steve? Okay. Call the roll, please.
Carter?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel? Worley?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, then we pulled 7.10. Is there any other information that anyone would like on 7.10? If not, then I need a motion to approve the reapportment of Patrick Murphy as treasurer for the BCEF for a two-year period? Need a motion?
I'll make that motion and then we have a point of discussion.
Okay, sure. Go ahead. And a second, please.
One second.
Okay. And Lisa, you had a question or a clarification?
It's not uncommon that associations such as the Ball Chatham Educational Foundation have a connection to another entity. What I do during the day is run much the same way. In fact, most states have an association connected with their state chamber. And a lot of times, as Patrick mentioned, there's not really a lot of delineation between our personal time and our work time. And I just don't see it as that uncommon of an event where your skill sets match what an association may need. And the bylaws dictate how it's, the organization is set up, and it's been approved by the Secretary of State's office.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa. All right. With that, call the roll, please.
Yes, Carter?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Worley?
No.
Luces?
Yes. Okay, moving on to personnel consent agenda items. We have 8.1 through, and I thought this was supposed to slow down in the summer, but through 8.34. Is there anyone who wishes to pull anything out for individual consideration?
I'd like to pull 8.16, please.
8.16, okay. We'll pull out 8.16. Anything else? Not then, I need a motion to approve our personnel consent agenda items. 8.1 through 8.34, minus 8.16, as presented tonight. Thank you, Brandon. And a second, please.
One second, then.
Okay, Lisa, thank you. And call the roll, please.
Cox?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Luces?
Yes. All right, we have 8.16. Lisa, you want to make a comment on that?
I would just like to congratulate Mr. Rambruch on his appointment as the assistant principal, and we're looking forward to great things from you.
I appreciate it. I'm very excited and thankful and grateful for the time, too, so, thank you.
Welcome aboard.
We're sorry to lose him from the class because he's an excellent teacher, but his wife will carry that torch for us. He's an excellent teacher, too, and so it's nice to have them both. We welcome him to our administrative team. Thanks for pulling that, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. So I need him...
This is going to be upset, I'm just...
Lots of kids to impact.
You want to make a motion then to approve it? Okay, very good. And a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Brandon. Call the roll, please.
Again, Carter?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Whitezel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Luces?
Yes. Again, welcome aboard.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Get to come to some more of these great meetings that we have. All right. On to old business. PMA refunding of Series 2010A bonds.
And we have Ann Noble with us from Stiefel to give us some information. Thanks, Ann.
Come on down.
Perfect timing.
So we can get you on the recording. Thank you.
Can I move this with this? You're in charge. Okay, no problem. All right, thanks. Well, thanks for having me tonight. Obviously, you guys have a lot going on, so I'll try to keep this brief. As you all will recall, or some of you were on the board at the time, the district in 2010 sold some bonds that were called Build America Bonds that were part of the stimulus program that the federal government offered at that time. Under sequestration, we are dealing with some changes to the Build America Bond program. And that's what I'm here to talk to you about tonight. So in 2010, you sold $9.5 million of Build America Bonds. And what that has meant to the district is that 35% of the interest expense that you owe on those bonds every six months is reimbursed to the district through a subsidy from the federal government. That's how it's supposed to work, okay? Under sequestration, that subsidy has been reduced by 8.7%, okay? So you're about to have your first payment reduced under sequestration, which would be your August 1 payment. So far, you haven't been affected by it. We have no idea how this will play out in the long run. Is this just temporary? Once we settle sequestration, will they reimburse you for the difference? Nobody really knows for sure, okay? For you all, it's $6,500 of payment, okay? It's not going to break the district. But it's $6,500 that you thought you were going to get, and it is $6,500 under the current reduction. So what if they reduce it more, so on and so forth, okay? We don't know, sequestration supposedly expires September 30th. What will that mean? Will they just roll it? Will they expand it? Nobody knows for sure. Under your plan of finance when you sold your bonds, there's a trigger point that basically says if the federal government does not continue to make your subsidy payments as expected, you have the option to refinance the bonds, okay? So that's what we're looking at here, is what we call an extraordinary redemption provision. Extraordinary because it was unexpected, all right? And that ERP, as we call it, is triggered by these four steps that are outlined here for you. Basically, what it means is you have to get past the August 1 payment, you have to make the payment. The federal government has to fail to make your full subsidy payment to you, and you have to cover the shortfall yourselves, okay? If all of those things happen, then the extraordinary redemption provision is triggered. And if the extraordinary redemption provision is triggered, then you do have the authority to refinance your bonds, as what we call a current call, which is basically instantly redeeming them. Just take them back right now and say, those bonds don't exist anymore, we're going to sell new bonds to replace them, okay? And we can go to the next slide, thanks. I know these numbers are impossible to read, but I will try to just explain what we have here. This is the district's current plan of finance with all your current bonds, plus the ones the voters approved in November that you haven't sold yet, okay? So this is the whole model for what we're looking at to finish the commitments you've already made to the community. And over on the far right-hand side, you'll see that purple highlighted column on the, or actually, it's peach highlighted column on the right over there. That represents the no tax increase pledge to the voters, okay? So you'll see, we're just holding it at that flat 70 cents, which is what you committed to the voters. So this is where you are now. And if we proceed with a refinancing, it basically just improves the situation slightly. But this is your, this is our base case, okay? We can go to the next slide. So if we do the refinancing, this is what we're looking at. We're looking at new bonds versus old bonds. Total savings to the district is the highlighted yellow column over here. This assumes that the federal government is actually paying you your full subsidy, which they're not, okay? So this is actually understating the savings from the refinancing. But we don't know, will they start paying you the full subsidy after September 30th? Or is it going to continue to be reduced? We don't know for sure. So right now, if you refinance the bonds and the federal government only held back that one sequestration payment, it would save the district down there at the bottom, that present value benefit $128,000. So after you paid the cost of refinancing the bonds, it would save you about $130,000. That's about 1.5% of the amount you're refinancing, which is a little bit under our industry threshold. We like to see your refinancing save you at least 2%. We can go to the next slide. This is what it looks like under the reduced subsidy scenario. So if the feds never increase the subsidy back up to its full level, it would save you right at that 2% threshold, okay? So you're right on the edge of hitting the industry threshold. The question then becomes, do you refinance anyway because it gets you out of a program? It basically removes the risk that you continue to get reduced further. There's basically no downside to doing the refinancing other than the cost of doing so, because you can always come back and refinance again. This refinancing is basically a freebie, doesn't count. Under federal tax law, you're limited by how many times you're allowed to refinance your bonds. This one doesn't count because it falls under that extraordinary redemption provision. So this is sort of a one-time shot. If the feds started making your full subsidy again, the window would close. It's not open permanently. So, you know, right now, we're right on the edge of that 2% threshold, but it may still be worth doing, okay? The last thing I wanted to highlight for you is this refinancing also opens up an opportunity for the district to be able to sell about 30... We just wanted to make you aware of the opportunity. Working cash fund bonds are generally used for exactly that, working cash for operations. It is a one-time source of revenue. It is not an ongoing infusion into the budget. But a lot of districts right now are looking at this as you're dealing with pressure from state, not seeing your EAV increase the way expected, growth in your case. It gives you a little bit of breathing room on the budget if you want to do so. So by doing the refinancing, we open up a little bit of room in what we call your debt service extension base, which is basically your limit under tax caps as far as this type of bond is considered. So I wanted to make you aware just that that opportunity was there. You could do it a year later. You don't have to do them at the same time, but it does create a window for you, okay? Just a one-time window. And then this next graph just shows what the tax rate impact would look like to the district if you did the BABS refunding and if you did the $3 million of working cash fund bonds. Again, all the way over there to the right to the peach column, it's still at the 70 cents. We can still say, hold the tax rate to that same 70 cent amount and add $3 million more of new bonds. Basically, that's what the bond refinancing is getting you, is just that little bit of wiggle room to add that little bit of working cash, okay? And still hold the 70 million, or 70 cent tax rate for the taxpayers. Our recommendation is highlighted on the next page, which is basically that we prepare the bonds for sale on the assumption that you won't get your full subsidy from the feds. Start the process of going back through the rating process, which Carrie and Patrick have become well versed in doing, and be ready to take advantage of this opportunity if the savings look appropriate. The reason your savings are hovering at this 2% mark right now is because the markets really moved dramatically in the last two weeks. Rates have gone up almost half a percent, and on your bond analysis, that has had a dramatic, it's cut the savings almost in half, okay? So two weeks ago, I would have been making a very different presentation. So that shows you how volatile all this is. It takes many weeks for us to pull together our financing, so who knows what kind of interest rate environment we'll be looking at at that point. But our recommendation would be that we proceed toward the BABS refunding, see where we are after August 1, and then we can make a decision to go or not after that point. And again, the working cash fund topic doesn't really need to be considered at this point. I just wanted you to know that it was a possibility out there.
I have two questions, Ann. So the first question is, is that once we, if we go ahead, but after August 1, the rates have gone up another half percent, another percent, we just say, oh, it's going to be too expensive?
Right. You would just table it. That would be my recommendation. I think if you can save anything, it's worth considering, but when it starts costing you something, then you clearly wouldn't want to proceed.
And then the second question is, will this affect the rating process or the results of a rating process either this time or when we go to sell bonds again in the future? Like if you're a homeowner and you refinance or you, you know, try to take on too much, you try to take out too many loans?
No, not at all. If you did proceed with the sale of the working cash fund bonds, the rating agencies will always ask, how are you using this? Is it for one-time expenditures? If you're using it just to truly pay salaries, what are you going to do next year when you don't have it? Those will be questions that the rating agencies would ask if we were doing that portion of what I talked about. But as far as the BABS refunding, those entities that are lucky enough to have an extraordinary redemption provision, which I did not say, but it's not everybody that has this option. There are billions of BABS that have been sold or were sold in 2009 and 10. The majority of them don't have an extraordinary redemption provision because the product was so new at the time, nobody, the Build America program was very short-lived. You sold yours at the very end of the process, and by then, the market had kind of figured out how to do it well, okay? It just takes a little while for everybody to work through all the little hiccups. So you guys were able to take advantage of the learning experience in the market and have this option available to you. There are, those that are lucky enough to have it are proceeding down this path right now, and the market's talking about it. It's quite the topic, but it's not a credit negative.
Okay. And so even though sequestration is a straight across-the-board cut, even for stimulus programs, it affects those as well?
That's right.
Which kind of defeats the purpose. All try to be logical. Oh, that's right. We're talking politics. I forgot.
Can you tell me your net present cash flow savings? Is that net of your fees?
It's net of all costs.
Okay. Net of all costs.
All costs, yes. Which I'm pretty conservatively estimating. And that net present value calculation is done at the cost of capital on the bonds.
Correct.
So it's a pretty conservative NPV calculation.
This 2010, that's when these were sold, these bonds, just for one time?
That's correct.
And what did we use them for?
Those were for health life safety insurance that you did.
Nine point three some million dollars? Point seven six seven?
Anything else?
So you're looking for us to approve, to begin the process, but not necessarily to conclude the process?
That's right. You're not approving anything that's obligating the district to anything at this point. I would not. We and PMA would be back before you to authorize the sale of the bonds.
Just to get the groundwork in place and to just kind of...
Your special statement, the credit rating.
Yeah, okay. Anything else?
No commitment.
No. No commitment. Even if...
I like cash flow savings. I like seeing cash flow savings.
It's a good thing. It's hard to find some of them.
Okay. Nothing else then? No other questions, comments? Need a motion then to approve the administration recommendation on the refinancing of the Series 2010 Build America Bonds as recommended this evening, and that would be up to and including the credit, credit rating and that sort of thing, right? And then you would be back to us to talk about it at that time?
That's correct. Yeah, we would be back before you on July 22nd for approval of a bond for Amber's resolution. So we'll be back in about a month and we'll see where the rates are then.
Okay. All right. Any questions? Need a motion then to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Rick. And a second, please.
I'll second.
Thank you, Susan. And call roll, please.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cough?
Yes.
And Nussis?
Yes.
Thank you, Ann.
Thanks, Ann.
And drive safely at home. Thank you.
How worse is that? Yes, thank you.
All right. Next, we have our special events photography contract, and if you've taken a look at that, there's a spreadsheet in your board packet on that. Patrick?
Appreciate it, Ford. We went out for bid for special events photography, which includes just the senior yearbook photo, then athletics, events, extracurriculars, and then prom, homecoming type events. Three companies bid. For some reason, all three thought that the bid was actually for, not only that, but the entire school photo package, even though the first sentence in this RFP said this is only for the following areas. So the reason why this chart's probably a little blank on some of the pricing is because they actually provided pricing on regular student photos and ID cards and things like that, and that was not at all part of this bid. So I don't know where the confusion came from. However, there was, that pricing itself was not a determining factor, was not going to be the sole factor for choosing a photography service contract. And they were notified that it would be very likely that the top candidates would be called back for an interview, and since we only had three, we brought in all three. We had a team representative, board members, administration, faculty on the yearbook, athletics, were all involved, who would be around these areas. They had great questions, and at the end of it, the team felt very confident that Ed Clark Photography for at least one year should be awarded the contract. The contract would allow for one-year renewals, not to exceed four more, should performance and services continue at an appropriate expectation level. They would be, the recommendation is that Ed Clark be awarded the contract for one year.
Questions? Comments?
What's the 15%? Because I just saw this today. No, actually. What's the 15% rebate?
That's from a different company. Should they have been chosen, their indication would have been that on packages sold, there would be a 15% return on those to the district and to those areas helps offset some of those costs.
Oh, to the district?
Yeah, goes back to that. It's typical in a photo package that you'll have an add-on sometimes of either a specific dollar amount or a percent, and that's in essence a way to generate some local money back to the school or the district in that particular area.
Clark has no rebate?
It was, he was willing to discuss. It didn't have anything formal in his documents, but he was open to the concept.
And typically, the way that works is instead of having a $10 package for parents, you end up having a $12 package to the parents, which $2 goes back to the school. So what do we want?
Yeah, yeah. If it was a 15% rebate for our students, then obviously that's lower, but I'm not a fan of passing that on. They don't need to pay us anymore.
So at this point, those were the active prices. They specifically include a rebate, if you will. He was open to that conversation, discussion with the schools and the events, that was something they chose to want to pursue.
Where do these prices compare to where we were last year on our package, do you know?
Ann, I don't.
Is it a better deal, about the same, or?
I think they're pretty similar. Pretty similar. I don't feel like there were a big increase in any way. Pretty competitive. I mean, you can sit pretty close to each other, but...
Last year's decided, no, and they weren't, they didn't even submit a bid.
Were they asked?
Yeah. I mean, they were...
Yeah, the current company, as you know, was, the contractor was terminated for service performance, but they were also notified that they were welcome to rebid.
They did.
And they were, in fact, communication was sent directly to them, notifying them of the bid when it came out, and no communication was received. The other company that we have on contract is Interstate that provides this, the day of the school photo, if you will. And they also chose right at the end not to bid, and that they are interested in this down the road. So should the opportunity become available to perhaps rebid our entire photography services, both regular student and this, to see if we couldn't get it under one vendor, then I think there was some interest in them after the fact that it had expressed interest. So I think they're more willing down the road. There might just have been a timing issue when this one came out, but they just chose not to this time. I think there's an interest from the district. Down the road, we definitely would like that, and I wouldn't be surprised if you see me before you sometime. Hopefully, this coming year, maybe recommend that. From tonight, it's just this one.
Sure. Any other questions? Now I need a motion to award the contract for photography services for special events to Ed Clark Photography.
I will make that motion.
Thank you, Lisa. And a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Brandon. And call roll, please.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cough? Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Nussis?
Yes. Next, we have our financial reports. Patrick?
Let's see, I'll start with revenues. Good place to start. Similar format as you've seen. Hopefully, you're getting familiar with it. Those who are new to the board, you'll see last year's revenues to this date in the first column. Current year's revenues received in the middle column. The third column then is the current adopted budget, which does not reflect any numbers that you may have taken action on tonight. Those will be reflected on the June one. And then the percent to the budget of what we received. And again, it's very typical in a school district throughout the state of Illinois that revenues don't come in very heavily throughout the year. It's not very steady. It peaks at certain times, and next month will be our next peak for revenues to begin flowing again. So while some of these revenues flow, the June one should catch up the majority of those, and that's very typical in the revenue pattern when we receive most of our revenue. The state, happy to say, has in fact only $500, one payment on food service bill right now that they haven't paid, which is unheard of in the last few years, but we'll take it. So we do expect tax money. I was hoping, to be honest, it would come today. It did not. So I don't have a number to even report to you on what the current revenue was, even through today, but as soon as I have that information, I'll certainly pass that along and let you know the good news. Hopefully, we'll have good news with the June revenue of this for taxes. I just, it'll be this week, it's supposed to be this week. I thought it would be today. It wasn't. So, and any other questions about revenue at this point? Expenses, Betsy, if you don't mind? And same format, broken down into some different categories, how we expend. Again, the budgeted amount does not reflect any action you've taken earlier on an amended budget. Those numbers will be reflected on the June format. So we're pretty in line with where we thought we were going to be, and we obviously had to have an amended budget because there were a couple of fund areas where we were going to be overspending if you had not approved that, and you did, so thank you for that. Overall, questions about the expenses at this point? And you'll notice when we get to the next chart, I have some new information on the next form, and I'll try to walk you through that and explain that because I'm sure there's some questions. Okay. If you can zoom in just a little bit, Betsy, that top box, if you will, sort of, well, even at the very top, I tried to highlight again this, the line of credit, just to draw your attention to that. It was reported in the last treasurer's report last month. There was a drawn line of credit. That first line of $385,000, that was the amount that's reported in the treasurer's report last month. We did draw again this month, the remaining balance minus a few cents. And specifically, you can see where we drew that, which fund, the Ed Fund, the Operations Fund, Transportation, or the IMRF Fund, and the Working Cash Fund, where we had to draw that to keep our balances appropriate, which also means when we go to pay those back, those, of course, are the funds where they pay back that particular line. But we did have to draw the full amount of our three, basically minus a few cents of our $3.5 million line of credit. The inter-fund loans, if you will, those were previously approved by this board to repay very old loans that had been caught by our auditors that had to be repaid back. So this was simply the journal entry finally being edited or entered into the system, the financial system, in the month of May. So that's why you see it there, but it was a previously approved authorization from this board to repay those loans. So that's what those inter-fund loans are. Otherwise, you have your normal revenues and expenses by fund for that month. That's pretty straightforward. You've seen that one. What I've been adding now, and this is the new format, and I, this will continue to be cleaned up, and I'll have some, you know, better information for you, and I certainly welcome your feedback if there's information that's on here or something on here that you would either, A, not need to see or would like to see else. If it's not on there, please let me know, and we'll modify it to meet your needs. The middle chart, which is much longer than the other ones, if you will, shows by our banks where we actually have the money residing. And so to try to break that out by the types of funds, the funds go across the top, if you will, and the banks, if you will, where we hold most of, all of our money. So you can see where the actual cash is, in fact, being held at this point, is there. you will, and the banks, if you will, where we hold most of our, all of our money. So you can see where the actual cash is, in fact, being held at this point, is there. If you see a number in parentheses, yes, that means negative. And allow me to explain at least some of those. I can't explain all of them. The, if you look at the Ed Fund and the Special Projects, those are highlighted. The Special Projects was an accounting structure that was set up prior to me being here that we call the 11 Fund. It's still in the Ed Fund. It still starts with a 1, and we have local authority to set up other funds within that for our own accounting purposes. But it primarily was used for grants. And when ARRA came out many years ago and provided specific money that had to be used in a certain way, it was sometimes easier to go strictly to their own fund, such as an 11 in this case. So it was for tracking purposes, there was a way to do that. And if you look and you say, well, why is there a negative $1.2 million in that first line in the Special Programs? Well, what the reasoning was, that showed that the district, in fact, fronted that money because it's a reimbursement type of issue. So we paid the money, we paid the salary, whatever it was that was being reimbursed, and then we sought reimbursement down the road. So this would be a very ongoing representation of that particular fund that either it had never received the full reimbursement, maybe it thought it would, the district simply covered the cost, if you will. And it's just a reflection of that. Those two funds make the full amount of the Ed Fund. So we're just wanting, there's a similar dual category there for the capital projects. There's a 60 and a 61. Somebody prior to me set up a 61 specifically just for tracking the money for the Glenwood Elementary project. Certainly have that ability. Obviously, we only have eight more of those numbers that we can do, and then we're out of numbers. So there's a different way of tracking that. And in my experience, what we've tried to do is we try to use the ending of our account structure, which is called the source of funds. We have digits at the end of every account string that we can set locally. That's a much better way to track the exact same information because we aren't going to run out of those numbers anytime soon. So I won't be creating new funds to track any of these additional projects. However, our accounting system and our money and our budgets for years have been showing that, so I need to reflect that until we can work with the auditors to eventually merge those back together where we would like them to really show what is in fact in just the Ed Fund. And so that's going to be an ongoing project that they're aware of, and it is my desire to bring those back together so you don't see them separated out. So that will take care of some of those negatives that you see. Some of the other negatives that you see, to be honest, I'm not sure why they're there. Some of them occurred when we entered the journal entries that the auditors asked us to do at the end of their audit. They have several journal entries, very common to say, please rejournal entry this into this account, and they have to do things sort of en masse. And as a result of some of those journal entries at their request, some of these became negative. So again, we'll work with them to rectify that, to show there really isn't negative money in the bank, but it's how it's being reported right now. So I just ask your patience while we continue to work through some of those numbers, get them back so they are in fact positive. You may ask, why do the two numbers not match? If you don't, I will. They should. I mean, you guys want to go home? Sorry. And issue transparency. The numbers should match there. Again, we had some journal entries that, these numbers do reflect, the top box does reflect the audited fund balances as of June 30th. However, due to the timing of the audit, and when they finally come and actually give us some numbers to journal entry, we had to close the books on that, on that year. So we had to physically make the journal entries in this fiscal year, in July. So there's an offset somewhere in there that we're working on to see. My top box would actually say you have less money than you do. The good news is there's more cash in hand that isn't being reflected currently in some of those funds right now. It's about a $278,000 difference, if you haven't done the math. So on a positive note, there's a little more cash in the bank than I'm able to reflect right now in that system, and we're working on that to figure out where exactly that is. I will get those numbers to match. Then the bottom box, I can go on to that one. This is strictly investments, and again, breaking it by fund. And over the years, there were some investments in some of the other funds. However, as you know, cash is not very readily available right now, so we have very little to invest. However, we have been able to sell bonds. Those bonds are specific to capital projects. Therefore, any investment we have ongoing really is in fact only in the capital projects. I'll continue to list the other funds for now just because it's an option. However, the reality is they really are only being invested in the capital projects. So again, they, we provided a journal entry on one of those PMA ones that shows a negative $1.5 million in the Ed Fund. We'll continue to work with them to see how do we just clear that off the books, because the net difference is we do have $276,000 in that one particular account at PMA. It's being invested. We continue to monitor every month, but it can only be used in the capital projects area. So this will track your investments, and if there's a transfer to operating accounts, that means we drew money out of our bond money to pay bills and invoices from our construction projects. And you're going to see that number grow considerably every month because our project invoices will come due here early shortly for much of our, many of our summer projects. That'll show you the draw when we've had to take a draw to one of those investment accounts. And the bottom, just brings it all back together, shows the top box down with the investment account to show you in fact what money really is on hand, is available to the district, while much of that is currently being invested, is in fact what we're responsible for. Any questions?
Did you rehearse that? Did you rehearse that?
Not once.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate your great effort in providing this. I think it's really important when we undertake a big bond referendum of $35 million, and I appreciate that. I do have one question, though. You know, you made reference to the Special Programs, and we have a negative $1.2 million, and it's because we just reprinted the money, and for some reason, we haven't gotten the money back. Is there any way we can follow up? Can we do collections?
This is part of my research with our auditors to backtrack as far as we can into that number to see what and where it exactly resides.
This doesn't have AMRESCO numbers in it, does it?
AMRESCO wouldn't be a grant-funded program.
Well, no, but if you, you can get money back from AMRESCO. I know that if they don't.
This is, that's the Ed Fund.
Okay. Okay. Well, we'll, so you're looking.
We are, and they're aware that, I want them, their assistance in working with, back into these numbers since they're familiar with the books for several years, want to go back into these and see how far back we can go to the negative, into the point where we can track it as far as we can. At some point, we need to correct it and get it showing that, with reality in what's here, and work on those journal entries to get them to show correct.
Right.
I don't have a timeline, but it is a project of them. And this was one of the responses to the audit findings, of course, was how we display and report information. And so I hopefully check another one off that, you know, yes, we're providing it, and then we'll continue to monitor it as you go forward.
Okay. Any other questions?
I actually just have one other request. Could you just put some sort of schedule together that sort of shows, just sort of generally, you could get this amount of tax receipts in, first installment tax receipts, and it doesn't have to be done until August or whenever, and then say, well, we had to use $3.5 million to pay back the line to the, to the bank, et cetera. So we can just see what monies of that first installment are really available to us for the subsequent year. Could you do that, please?
Isn't that what you do anyway? I mean, you put them in there.
It's part of all of our revenues received.
No, but what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, we get revenues, and technically, these revenues are supposed to be used for the following school year, beginning July. But we're actually using some of those new year revenues to pay back, for example, the line that was really related to expenses from the prior.
You're talking about our reliance on early taxes that we need to stop relying on.
Yeah, and I would like to just see what that percentage is that gives us the amount that's really available to us for the upcoming, for the, you know, the subsequent year.
Let's see what we can put together. And the only reason I hesitate is that it's part of all of our local money that's received. And we don't really earmark a tax receipt, you know, or what, you know, other bills that are going out that time. So how I track that particular revenue against the expense.
It doesn't have to be in detail, but let's say your first, you know, the total of all your first installments are $9 million. Okay, well, we know that we have to pay back $3.5 million. So, okay, well, that leaves 5.5 million that's really available to us for the next school year. It doesn't have to be detailed. All I'm asking is, I know it's about $9 million, but if I, if there's other debt payments that we don't know about, that we're, have sort of postponed, then I would like, I would like those included. All I'm trying to get to is the number of.
Well, your July report, just to jump ahead a little bit, your July report will show what the repayment is of the $3.5 million, as well as the other inter-fund loans that we've already borrowed from this year. So to pay back with those loans. So you're going to see that, hopefully, assuming there's enough revenue in order to cover all those, you're going to see that in the July, and if not, the August, you're going to see the repayment back, and then you're going to see what your fund balances are, what you in fact have moving forward. I mean.
Right. Okay, I'll pull it off of the financial statements. I'm just thinking maybe some of the other board members would be interested in that percentage.
And Susan, I can appreciate what you're saying because some of the ways in which you measure fiscal health in the district are, you know, a couple of, there are lots of ways to measure that, obviously, but one is to, what is your reliance on early taxes? And we shouldn't be reliant on them, but, you know, and your tax anticipation warrants. If you're, if you're going out for tax anticipation warrants in the line of credit, then, you know, those are a picture, I think that's what you're trying to get, is the picture of what is the fiscal health? And, and we can get that. I mean, we can just say.
Say, you're 3.5 plus the other fund balances that we've already borrowed from.
Right, we can show you how much early taxes we get, and then, you know, how much we're using.
There are the anticipated ones at this point.
But, well, you know what? Just saying that statement, so, or, you know, I think that those are important, they're easily understandable, but I think board members need to know, okay.
Sure.
Hey, you know what? We've spent a lot of that just to clear out last year, so.
I don't think that's unusual. It hasn't been over, unfortunately, over the last several years, it's been kind of SOP, but you're right, we shouldn't have.
That's our college accounting, that's about it.
Well, the only thing that is a cause for concern is if that percentage keeps growing, where in your, in your installment, your first installment, if that percentage keeps growing, that is to say, to, you have less available to you in the subsequent year, yes, then that is of greater concern.
Well, and you're right, it's a cumulative effect on that if, because you've got this much, and just like, I think, I don't know if PMA did, you did your kind of analysis where we, based on the numbers we had at the time, your working cash, or your, the money we had to borrow kept going up year to year because of that. So, and that's, there's a lot of factors that go into that, and I think that that's something that we've been, that we've been looking at.
Right, I mean, you look at your revenues, and you look at your expenses, and you try and bring that percentage down so that you have more directed to the following year.
So any draw in the line of credit and any fund transfer you're doing between funds is a direct indication that you're going to use early tax money to repay that?
Correct.
So those are your numbers. I mean, that, and you have those right now, current, as to what that is that we've not been able to support.
So could you just verbally say that? You'd say nine, approximately nine?
I don't know what, offhand, I don't know what the number is.
Okay, well, maybe next month.
I mean, 3.5 for that, whatever the other fund balance transfer for earlier this year.
That's 1.8.
And we really don't, you really don't know what kind of money is going to come in. I mean, it could be, it could be.
An early tax.
I mean, it's been all over the place in the past years.
Well, that's fine. I mean, once you have those numbers.
But the fact that we borrowed from other funds earlier this year, and had access to line of credit, those are all indications that we didn't have current cash in the proper fund in order to pay off some of those expenses.
Correct, and it's also an indication of what's available for the next year. If you, at your convenience, if you could just put together a short schedule for the board members, I think they would find that interesting, as I would too.
Would that be similar to a chart that you showed us a while back, where you showed us dipping into the red and then.
That's what he's talking about then.
And then when we, and Alan Harlan asked, you know, what's the 3 million debt?
Right, but it was based off months.
Exactly. Yep.
Cash flow analysis.
Yep. It's that same chart that PMA helped us put together.
Is that, have you seen?
Well, I mean, yeah, there was a lot of red ink there.
It tied to the air.
Yeah.
But.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, Patrick. Appreciate it. Is that it?
Yes, it's.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yeah, are you up? No, you're not.
No, I'm next here in case they have final questions.
Okay, no, that's it. We'll move on to new business.
Do we have to approve that?
The first item, 11.1, is a settlement.
Do you want to approve the treasurer's report?
I'm sorry.
That's all right, sorry.
I got wrapped up and going on. I need a motion then to approve the treasurer's financial slash financial reports as presented this evening.
I'll make that motion since I brought it up.
Thank you. In a second, please. Thank you. And call the roll, please.
Jessica.
Carter.
Yes.
Cop.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Wurley.
Yes.
Newses.
Yes. Thank you. All right, moving on. New business. First item is the settlement agreement with R. Gillum, that is in your board packet. And I've got a couple of things to say about that. Give me a second here. The, as you see, the settlement agreement is attached to the agenda item and relates to statements previously issued by the board. The settlement is a final settlement between the district and Mr. Gillum, and the primary terms are as follows. After May 31st, 2013, the district is released from its obligation to pay family medical and dental insurance for Mr. Gillum and his dependents at approximately $1,059.60 per month through the age of 65 or through 2022. The value, based on what the, what the costs are right now, would be $121,854, which probably will increase, that savings would increase over that time based on insurance costs. Gillum will make a one-time lump sum payment to the board in the amount of $16,100 within 30 days of the board's execution of the agreement. After execution, the agreement, of the agreement, statements about the agreement or any facts related to the agreement will be limited to the statement that is attached in Exhibit A. Let me say one other thing about, about the agreement. Just let me get back here. We do have, there was a clerical error in this agreement, and that clerical error is in first line. The actual dates of employment for Mr. Gillum was July 1st, 2007 through May 29th of 2012. That's the only change in that agreement. We will make that change, and I will initial that agreement and then sign that agreement, depending on, on the vote here tonight. So, any questions? Comments? Okay. I need a motion then to approve this agreement as presented this evening.
I move to accept the agreement as presented.
Thank you, Linda. And a second, please.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Lisa. And if there's no questions, call the roll, please.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
No.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
No.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
And Newses?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, everyone. And moving on to 11.2. We, let's see, we've got GHS Technology Student Association, some kids attending a conference in Florida.
Yeah, TSA Technology Student Association is sponsored by Mr. Milner. They have qualified, have the opportunity to attend a national conference in Orlando, Florida. When Mr. Newses first approached me about this, I said, if you can find a way to pay for it, because I'm probably not even going to recommend it if not. But he worked very hard. He worked with Rockdy, Reed Office, Career and Technology Education, the Illinois Technology Student Association, and also with his own TSA Activity Fund. And through Rockdy and Illinois TSA paying most of the costs, and very little coming from his own TSA, all costs have now been covered. There's only three students, so he'll be the chaperone by himself. His family's going to end up going with him anyway, so he'll have an additional adult with him. But they're just looking for permission, obviously, to travel out of state to attend this conference. They'll compete in different levels of engineering and technology and math and science areas, go to leadership conferences, so on. It's a really good deal for them, but they have the opportunity to go, and they've managed to cover the costs themselves, they're seeking permission.
It's pretty exciting to think of our kids, you know, having this opportunity, especially, you know, I know it includes math and science, but, you know, more technology, just a little bit off of that.
Yep. Yes, for those kids who really want to get into technology, whether it's engineering, science, or the math, but our kids generally do very well in state competitions, and now they, they want the opportunity to try to go to national competitions, see how.
Good for them, I think that's great.
Absolutely. Any questions? Thanks. Then I need a motion to approve the GHSTSA students to attend the conference in Orlando, Florida, as presented.
Salute.
Who's that, Brandon? Okay, and a second, please.
I'll second it.
Thank you, and call the roll, please.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Witsel?
Yes.
Worsley?
Yes, with congratulations.
And Worsley?
Yes. Next, we have a couple of policy first readings.
Policy team met week ago Friday, Lisa and Susan, and this is just minor changes, actually verbiage changes to the social media policy that we adopted in February. When we looked it over, and Bob and Tammy, he'll be, looked it over, our instructional tech support people, we actually had less rights given to adults and kids, and so we needed to make some of those changes. And they're minor changes, as you can see, about accessing technology. Instead of saying personal technology and social media, it's personal technology to access social media. So, these are minor changes, this is just a first reading. Any questions?
Nope, nothing? Okay, thank you. Next, car holder, card holder statement, affirming familiarity with requirements.
This also went through the policy committee, this is a first reading. This is a change to the statement that the user sign when using a P-card. Anybody who might use a district P-card, credit card, has previously signed is a statement saying they understand the policies and stuff. But there's more to it than that, there's more, there's a handbook, there's some other documents they need to do, so there's other places they're signing. So to try to bring that together to one place, and there's even an online training that we're now going to ask them to go through prior to, every year prior to even being able to use a card, this captures all of that in one place, and so by having it in the board policy becomes much more enforceable and for us to apply. It's the statement they would sign indicating they have done all of these things. The other policy is still there, the other requirements are still there, as far as what they can spend, what they can't spend, all of that's there, we're just changing the statements that they're signing, getting a little bit more information from them. The other policy needed the supervisor to sign, that's not the case here, we really need them to sign as the user that they have done these things. And then that's what we have on file in case something were to be uncovered down the road. If they were either aware or not aware of the policies, this is their indication, yes, I'm aware of it, yes, I've done this, and therefore I'm allowed to use the card for the year. So, mostly a language change, but happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Nope, okay. Next one we have is extracurricular athletics.
Again, a first reading, so we go through the policy committee as well, of course, we're, the first, well, the first item there, since we were in the policy, this wasn't the intent to change, but since we were in there, once you look at a policy, you want to look at everything in the policy, and see if there's not something else that possibly maybe needs to be fixed. And the athletics brought to our attention that if the students and families are filling this out, there was a listing of multiple activities they could participate in, well, it becomes an issue of, did we capture them all? And instead of always having to come back and add another one and make this thing longer, the idea was we would rather just put a line there and let them fill in the sport or athletic they're actually participating in. So that's just really a cleanup, since we were already in here anyway. The real meat of this is, is down below here, where the new number six, if you will, that indicates that they're aware that their regular student fees need to be current in order to participate in, at the game level of athletics. They certainly can continue to participate in the practices, but if a game were to come and they have not paid their book fees, or they have a negative account in their lunch balances, for example, that are, that are, you know, regular school day events, we didn't have anything that said this was our intent, that we, you need to be current with your school activity, much like you have to have grades, you know, and reach a certain level before you can participate. We need the financial piece there as well, and that they need to be current. They can have a plan in place if they're not able to pay a full amount, they can work with the administration to say, you know, can I pay X dollars every week, or X dollars every month? And as long as they have an agreement in place and they're current with that agreement, then they've satisfied that criteria for that particular time group. Should they become delinquent in that area, then of course, they would fall back to not being eligible. We wanted something in policy that we can help enforce with the coaches and the athletic department to keep students from playing, only because they're, they're not paying or not current on their, their other fees that they owe the district. There are other options to work out, you know, work with them on any area that we can, but the reality is we have families who will pay the athletic fee and the family fee even, and have all their kids playing in multiple sports, and not pay a single dollar towards the book fees, or have a negative lunch balance racking up into 10, 20, $50 and ongoing, and still continue to be able to play athletics. And we just feel they should be current with their academic and the school day as well.
Okay, questions?
I have a question. Patrick, when I read this, I didn't see it in here, but I know at one time we talked about tying, and maybe we already did this in the handbook, but tying disciplinary measures that occur at school with the ability to participate in athletics. Did we already cover that, Jim, in the handbook?
Yeah, that's.
We did, okay.
I'm sorry, I'm there absolutely.
Okay. Because it was unclear at one time, but that clarification was made.
Maybe I'm missing anywhere you're asking.
Well, it's that if a student has a disciplinary action against them, that when they participate in the sporting event, they may not be able to participate for the first couple of games based on something that happened in the disciplinary.
Yes, that's been dealt with in the athletic handbook.
In the athletic.
And it's also part of the, essentially, it's part of the letter that goes out when something like that happens.
Okay, so that clarification has been.
Yeah, sometimes in the fall, but that student may not be participating till the winter.
Right.
The letter indicates that this is what may happen, you need to contact the bill.
This, to me, one of the more important things on this whole thing is this concussion information sheet. I'd like to see, and I don't know if they taught, the policy committee talked about, I would like to see a sign-off line on this part of it also, that says that they've signed off and understand the information under the concussion, under that information sheet at the bottom of that. I don't know if you guys talked about it at all?
I think it's a great idea.
Because it's, it's.
I think it's a great idea.
It's on there as one of the higher numbers, it states it before, in the area where they're signing, it says that they received the concussion information.
Can we put the concussion information on a separate page? I mean, it's, it's.
That concussion information is the, is the exact copy as provided by IHS.
Is it in there?
It's attached.
Yeah, it's in there.
Hold it, what number is it? You see it?
It's crossed out, but it's two.
Right there.
Two.
It's the new.
Right above the signature, above the large letter.
Oh, okay. I see, okay. New number four, okay. I mean, that's critical for our student athletes, because that's, it can affect them for the rest of their life.
And that sheet is the exact copy as provided by HSA's website, and it hasn't even been revised as recently as this April. It's still verbatim the exact copy that they distribute and require districts to pass out.
It acknowledges, yeah, that they've received it, but it still doesn't, I mean, we acknowledge on here that they've read this and that they have.
Well, and I know for some sports now, they're required by IHSA to take a test.
Sure.
A F E.
Okay, baseline, okay.
It's a baseline test, and then if they have any type of injury that could possibly be a concussion, they have to take that test again, and.
Gotcha, okay. Well, I just, you know.
I don't know if it's all sports, but it's pretty much covers a lot of it.
So, okay. If everybody else is okay with it, then I'm okay with it. But it's just something we need to make sure is, that all of our coaches are, and I know our coaches are on top of our strings.
John is, yeah. He, he goes through fit to make sure all those kids get through that test.
Okay.
That baseline test.
Okay, gotcha, okay. Never mind. Okay. And if there's no other questions, we'll move on. Thank you, Patrick. 11-6, approved mechanical supplies. Jim?
Good evening. A couple of months ago, I came to board and had gotten permission to go out and see bids, so we had, we have done that. The grid here shows all of the bidders and all of the supplies, it's pretty straightforward. We're not looking for a single provider, so the items that are highlighted are the items that we're looking to identify as the, as the low bidder for each, each individual. It's, it's about three pages long, so, obviously, and I will go through the items, but the recommendation would be to select the identified vendor for the identified supply.
Okay, any questions? Similar to what we've done.
Yes, we've been doing this for the last three or four years, yeah. And the list continues to get long.
Yeah.
We identify things that we use frequently, we, we continue to add things on to the bottom to, and even things that aren't on here, we, if we have to go out and purchase something that's an expensive item, we go through the process of manually pricing from two or three suppliers, always.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
You bet.
So I need a motion to approve the administration's recommendation to select products highlighted under the various vendors for inclusion in the transportation department's purchase list as presented this evening.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Lisa, and a second, please.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Susan, and call the roll, please.
Yes, Worsley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yep.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Witsel?
Yes.
And Worsley?
Yes, thank you.
Do you want to start this off?
Yeah, let me start this off real quick here, Dave, if you, if you would, okay? This next item here, 11-7, discussion of possible district office renovation for additional office space. As a lot of, as we've talked about on the board here, and we've talked, I think, in public board meeting a couple of times, we've looked at a couple of different options of, what we want to do or what we should be doing with this building. One is to remodel it top to bottom, front to back, side to side, with new mechanical systems, new wall, and new privacy partitions in there, because you can, if you're in a meeting in one room, you can hear what's going on in a couple of rooms down here. And we really don't have space, you know, we've got a couple of clerks that work for Patrick up front who handle money all the time, that are right there by the front door, that need to have some privacy. We need a couple of other people that need to have private conversations with people that are out in the front there. Now, one option we've had is to, or one option we could look at is to make, is to change this room, change the boardroom into office space, remodel it into office space, put a conference room, a small conference room up front, board would have to find alternative space in the district to hold our board meetings. Another alternative, we were approached by WSCC in the building there on the northwest corner of the high school campus. They've been downsizing, but we looked at that, and it didn't seem to be a, a good fit at the time with all of the demands that would be put on us for revenue and, and just remodeling and that sort of thing. We've looked at a couple of different things, we could build a new building and put the district office there. As our district grows, our need for personnel in the district office grows, just because of everything that goes on, from personnel to special education, to all the other things that go on in the district office, payroll and that. So we've got a couple of other things that are out there that, you know, that we've wanted to try and take a look at, and I think Dave has got some things on, some costs here that, that we could look at for this building and for others, we could, you know, we could also add on to one of the other buildings that might be, you know, one of the other buildings in the district that's out there, that would meet our needs also. So, with that, Dave?
Okay, these numbers were thrown together by our C M. Basically, that's general construction. Since we put those numbers together, and they're very preliminary numbers, we've analyzed the construction cost a little more closely to include mechanical, like plumbing, and submitted information on architectural fees, general contractor fees, contingency, and at the end of the day, we end up about $370,000 with construction. That puts us on par with the construction that we're doing in the other administrative areas throughout the district at this time. There are needs that have never been addressed here, such as ventilation air. You put that many people in this space, that was never designed with ventilation air. There are a number of complaints about smell, just a bad working area for, bad environment. It doesn't address enough room for administrators. We get a fortune of administrators in here for that cost, it doesn't put all the administrators up here.
If I might add, add to, sorry, Dave, we have three other direct, two other directors, two or three, three, right?
Right.
Three other directors that rotate office space. You come into this building anytime during the day, or during the week, and Chad's in here, unless someone, someone else like Jill is on vacation and he, that he uses other people's offices. We have Randy Allen, our Director of Security, who is roaming, and he, he and Chad share space in here, and who else?
Betsy and Dave, too, but, yeah.
Yeah, Betsy and Dave, and Dave's kind of out, you know, his space over there is not.
The communication piece for me is very important.
It's difficult to communicate.
I lack that face-to-face communication, which my CFO needs pretty consistently, and so does my superintendent. The other items that we don't address by doing this is managed documents. There are people that come down to my space where I'm at, in the basement, and that's an outlet where we keep a lot of the managed documents, documents that we have to keep under lock and key. I built a, what I thought was a fairly large document space, and it's full, so I'm going to have to either add on or do something else. This number doesn't completely remodel this building.
This 372 number?
Yes.
I'm not going to discuss tonight, but there, we found that we've had termine damage and some other issues that were not addressed under this plan, and there's, there's extensive damage.
Please, Patrick.
So my recommendation, based on the, the cost of what we're looking for renovating this space, that we paid 240-some thousand dollars for this building, and to put that kind of money back into it, and really not get the, the kind of users that we really need, I don't, my recommendation would be not to do that. I do have a follow-up recommendation. We've looked at the high school and, and that addition, and there is an opportunity to put a bump out on that, on the south side of the building. What that would do for us is allow the, the O and M that, that is part of the, the high school to support the district office. Right now, district offices are treated a little bit differently than, than the schools. By attaching it to the school, we can fund it, the O and M piece a little differently. And because of that, I would look at that very, as a long-term need. And when you recognize that O and M costs are 80% of what total building costs are over the life of the building. Any question about a bump out?
What?
We're talking about enough square footage to support what our current needs are for district office, plus expanding the boardroom.
Well, tonight, all we need is just a little bit of conversation. What, you know, Jim referred to is that we've gone through a lot of different scenarios over the past couple of years, ever since the, actually, several years, ever since the 2020 phase, multi-phase plan was distributed, we had talked about moving to the middle school, and whether or not, you know, the problem with that is we, you know, the downfall is it was simply, probably a waste of money, because we knew we'd have to move right back out, and so, you know, retrofit those back into classrooms. So we kind of let go of that idea, the WSCC idea. The difficulty there was we were going to spend quite a bit of money to purchase part of that building, and then we would have to be sharing it. Again, so how does, how do the utilities work? How do we split those out fairly? You know, how do we make sure that we would, we would also have to put money into that building to make it fit our needs? And we knew we'd have to build a, possibly a boardroom, so we kind of let go of that idea. And we talked about for a little bit the bump out situation that Dave referred to, and, you know, Dave and I kind of debate this, I stand on it a little differently, that, you know, I said, no, let's just stay here and make this building work. Well then, as a facilities director, he knows a lot more about what it takes to, because I just said, we'll just renovate it, and we'll just stay here. And he knows a lot more about what it costs to actually renovate it, and what the issues are above these ceilings, because he's looked into it more. So, we've debated lots of different topics, lots of different ideas about how do we make it work? Whatever it is we're going to do, make it a, a long-term issue, or long-term resolution. And it's really at a point where we're just kind of looking for feedback, we don't have to do anything tonight, other than to get your opinions on, your thoughts. Our struggle is that we don't have enough office space, we don't have enough security up front for the, the fact that they're reconciling insurance claims and bank statements on a regular basis and counting cash up front as people are walking in, there's a lot of distraction. We don't have enough meeting spaces, but I don't know that this building will ever give us that, we really need a couple of small meeting room spaces, but if we renovate this building, that, you know, that doesn't necessarily solve that issue, but it's just, we're kind of at a standstill, and I, rather than keep stalling this conversation, I thought, let's just throw it out and start talking about what the thoughts are out there, because this building doesn't, as it is today, doesn't meet our needs. And a lot of, one of the big issues is, is the fact that sound does travel so, so far up the front of the building, that we can hear each other's Patrick's, and my offices are, you know, three removed from each other, and I can sometimes hear his conversation, and I can definitely hear Michelle's or Jill's conversations. So, and when you have a, a really confidential conversation going on, when you have issues that are very confidential, it's difficult, because it is just not a well-designed building for the purposes that we're using it right now. So, just kind of wanted to throw it out there to say, we, we don't have any answers at all, but.
So we're not going to approve the modifications?
We are, no.
On 11.10, we're not going to do that tonight?
Yes, those have to be done regardless.
Okay.
Those have to be done regardless of if we sell this building or stay here, because that's the, if you've seen the backside of the.
Okay.
Building, it's simply falling apart. You know, rather, regardless of what we do, we need to, it's crumbling back there.
These costs are, are, would be addition to that cost.
Right.
So the numbers are really changed now, correct, Dave? It would be with the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, the new number really is 370,000, correct?
That's my estimate, yes.
Okay. So I have a question to ask you. I am not, I am not good with a hammer at all, but it was, it's always my understanding that it's cheaper just to build than to pull out, renovate, and redo. So, do you think that's a pretty fair statement?
Cheaper to build than it is to renovate?
And redo.
If we could renovate this space to meet our needs, I'd say no, because the cost of new construction would be higher than renovation costs. But the issue is, by renovating this particular space, we still don't meet our needs, okay? Because there's not enough room for all the administrators that reside here. That's number one problem. Number two is again, the, the documents that everyone keeps running back and forth for.
There are a lot of...
The bill is just not large enough right now.
So even at the end of the day, we could spend 370,000, and it really doesn't address all the needs, correct?
No, it doesn't.
So I've forgotten when the addition to the high school is. What year are they starting to think about that? That's at the way in, correct? What year?
That starts in next year, 2014.
Dave, can you talk about your idea that you brought that up, that, about building out now a district off, or sooner than that? Can you explain that? The shell?
Yes.
Concept?
What we'd like to do, starting in 2014 with Graham Heights Design, is to build the shell, and actually, it's more than the shell at this point, because we could have actually started construction this year. And that would provide the shell. What we would do would build out the, the educational wing, and then on the south side of that educational wing, apply enough space to support our, our needs and future needs out to 2022 for district office.
And we started...
What that would do, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
What that would do by attaching it to the building, again, we could tie the operating cost to the, the high school right now, rather than tying it to...
Having two buildings operate. And we, we kind of talked about that for a little bit, and then we put it on hold, and I kept telling Dave, I don't, you know, we weren't gonna talk about it right now because it was just...
We kicked this around.
So we stalled.
So my question is, the $35 million bonds, where are you gonna reduce the 370,000 to get this additional idea put into place?
Well, actually, we've looked at it. We, we have a contingency of $2 million in that $35 million, and we're coming in under budget in many, many areas. With the current plan that we have, we could support a 10,000 square feet bump out. So...
Because remember, we talked about not doing the second floor of the high school as was originally proposed, but initially...
Right now, this facility is 5,000 square feet.
We don't think we'll ever get that.
Right.
My question to you is that we can double our space?
Well, you probably have gathered that I don't want to spend a penny over 35 million. So I don't have a running sense of our contingency funds yet, but I, I, I guess an open item that I'm trying to figure out. But what prevents the district from renting?
From, from doing what?
Some rent, for renting.
Renting space?
Yeah.
We looked at, we actually looked at...
Yeah, we did. Across the street, we looked at renting a space over here that was across the street from the current district office. The difficulty was it wasn't in a condition that we wanted to even rent it. But then the hard part was, we thought about just putting all of our finance, you know, and business over in that building, and then us here, you know, and then it didn't, that didn't work very well either because then you've got communication issues with them running across the street all the time to talk to each other. But we did kind of explore that a little bit. I don't know if there's any other space for rent that...
And then you gotta talk about your operational costs, because now you're doubling up on operational costs.
All right.
Yeah, now, by the operational costs, HVAC type of arrange, or type of equipment, you'd be able to tie into the existing building that would be at the high school, that wing.
That's correct.
And use that as it's designed, and we would not tax that system for another 10,000 square feet.
As we're going with a single-story unit, a single-story educational wing, we can tie it right back into the existing systems.
I just have two comments. One is contingencies are always just that, and as soon as we also commit to something larger, that's when the boot will hit the fan and then we're in trouble. But not necessarily. It's obvious that we need the space, and a bunch of us that don't know what we're doing with regard to renovating and coming up with ideas or discussing it. And I think it would be nice if all the things you guys have talked about, you've got a proposal, 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 and then we could sit down and look at those, and that would be the appropriate time. I mean, if you guys need the space, you need the space. So, I mean, if we could spend an hour kicking it, canning around about what our options are.
Well, I think that that's what we wanted to do, Brandon, to start the conversation again, because we're getting down to, with the architect and, you know, that project starting on the high school next year, is if that was the op, that was an option, to take a look at that, then we could, you know, we'd have the architects and we'd get some, some good numbers from O'Shea and that and see what we could do. But, you know, we've got four directors that are floating around right now that, you know, Betsy's in the copy room, and it's nice and cool in there in the summer though, but it's cold in the winter.
It's a cool near the...
But, you know, we've got, like I said, we've got Chad, who doesn't, who's kind of a man without a country, and, and Randy, and Dave is getting that way, too. So it's, you know, it's something that we have to provide, provide the space, and it's, but this was just for discussion purposes, and we can have Dave put some things together.
I was gonna say, if, do you want us to kind of, what I'm hearing is maybe explore the bump out conversation, you know, and explore the...
Well, it never hurts you to look. I don't think there's any...
Those two options?
No.
If that's something you need, just go ahead and look in. I mean, I would think...
I just didn't want to spend our time unless there was a thought.
Didn't we at one time talk about working with the village and having the village offices?
We did.
And the district offices?
We did. And they're still interested in that. I talked to Mayor Gray about that a while ago, probably right as I took this position, that he is still very interested in that. The difficult part would be that it's, it would be more likely that maybe we would do a standalone building for something like that, because then you've got the police department and the village office and whatnot. And, and if you're going to do that, then that's more costly to, than to do a bump out like Dave's talking about. So, but yeah, they did, they are interested in doing something like that, sharing a, a meeting space for their village meetings as well as our, our board meetings. We kind of talked about, when we talked about WSCC at one time, we kind of talked about, could we make that work for them? I don't know that there was enough space there necessarily for that, but, yeah, they were definitely interested.
But if you were to go in with the village for all of their needs, well, yes, it's more costly to build a standalone, we'd be sharing
Sharing the cost.
The cost and sharing the O and M.
Sure. I think, though, the initiative would have to come from us on that because I don't think the village is going to...
Right. I don't know if they're in...
I don't know what their financial status would be and what they've...
Never visited lately.
And where we would put something like that.
Well, we had talked about putting it out on the corner of Plummer and Iron Bridge, or Gordon, or Gordon Drive, right there with the, by the sign at the high school. I mean, that was one discussion we had way back when, wasn't it, then? So it's, but we can look at some of that kind of stuff, too. It's just that, that I think we would be building the building and then running it back to them. So...
And it would have to be a pretty good sized building, too.
I'm glad you said that, Susan, because I didn't want to say that. I don't know. That's a great idea.
Would we look at selling this building?
Yes.
Dave, what do you think this building is worth?
We, we did, what it's worth, we did get an assessment. Was it 250, I think?
225, six and nine, I think.
We got an assessment because we wanted to, if we were gonna swap some stuff with WSCC.
Yeah, we did get an appraisal. It was 250, 275, I think.
So that could be used to offset the...
Yes. Well, yes. Can we put it in that fund?
Right, right.
Patrick?
Right.
I said, can we put, will we, will we sell this for in that fund or not?
Well, I would just, since you brought it up and you had a chance, the bond money can be used for renovations, as it was stated in the referendum. So what Dave was proposing by bumping out an existing renovation and tying it into an existing footprint is completely acceptable by that money.
To use that bond money.
The conversation of going with the dish of the village into a new building is a different conversation, a completely different set of money that would have to be considered.
And it's a separate building, so you'd have to go up for a referendum to do that.
Maybe a space. We currently don't have any money set aside for new building construction.
Right.
So just to keep that in mind, would consider that option?
We sell this building, where does that money go?
Yeah, we can put that back. It's local money, so we can put that back into...
Construction, okay, okay. So, take a look, see what we got.
Except, Patrick, you bring up...
We'll look at some options around what we discussed.
Yeah.
Yeah, because, Patrick, you really bring up the only, there's only one option. Really, we, we have to renovate some existing facility.
You renovate an existing footprint. You can add on, as we're doing at GE, for example, and other places, you can expand that footprint, but you have to tie into the existing footprint or to technically use our bond money. And the high school clearly allows us to do that, and we have the space for it, and we have the needs and the AC and everything else fit that, renovating here is allowed with the current bond money because it's an existing building. And by definition of what the bond referendum was labeled, this building can also be renovated. And we're meeting those needs. However, as you've seen, even if we were to divide some of this space up, we still haven't met all of the needs that we have in the district office. And we now have displaced you into some other avenue, and I don't know how long that'll last. So...
Dwayne, do you have a question? Yeah, you can ask a question.
If the WSCC is on our property, do we risk by not doing something, that are getting an entity that we don't want on campus?
Good question. We have the first right of refusal on that contract because they do lease it from us. And so we get to say, you know, if, if they would bring someone in, we have the first right of refusal on it. So...
And if they're downsizing, are they going to deal with us?
Well, yeah, we talked to them about a year and a half ago is when they were...
We tried that, yeah.
We tried that, yeah. Now, the other thing that we could do, I mean, we've had some talk about an early childhood center that...
Right, like if that, if they should choose not to use their building anymore, we thought, you know, even if we did something else with the district office, there, you know, you could do maybe an early, early learning center or an adult, I'm sorry, an alternative placement center, you know, and much as what we have at Sasa Central right now, you know, you could do, there are other things that you could do with that building should they decide not to use it anymore at WSCC, but...
But that's a good question, yeah. We do have first right of refusal and, and it just, there'd even be some, I mean, Dave looked at that, we'd even have some construction there also, which then that money probably, I don't know, could that, I don't know if that money that we, that could not come out of there because it's an existing building, it's not ours.
The WSCC is not one of our existing...
Yeah.
Correct. So we'd have to use working cash or something.
Yeah, so...
I know, I'm Debbie Downer, so...
Hey? No, you're keeping us legal, so we don't. So the auditors don't come after.
Renovate here, add on to an existing building, whether it's the high school or one of the other ones. These are pretty much two choices. And then from there, you can then piecemeal what personnel needs out of that. The high school one is the most viable, the most long-term.
Well, if it's okay with everybody, let's have Dave put some stuff together and get back to us with, at a future meeting with just some kind of preliminary stuff, okay? Is that good? Okay. All right. Where are we here?
11.2.
Approval of building additions at GIS. Oops.
If you're fine, just hit me about it. I'm tired.
Me, too.
First document shows the, all the projects managed by our CM, guaranteed by our CM. The project we're talking about tonight is the Goodwood Intermediate School at the bottom. And we're, we're asking, we're recommending to accept a bid from O'Shea Builders for $2,755,000 and $23 for building additions at GIS. That's all we're asking for tonight. We've already asked for the, the other two, and the other two have been approved that are in the, in the Ball Elementary School and Lumber Elementary. We did want to show tonight that, that this completes the projects for Phase One with our, our CM.
What does Phase One include at GIS?
Phase One includes the, you know, administrative wing.
Okay.
And that's, that's it. We, we...
Okay.
It's got a couple of, it's got a masonry tuck point project outside one of the playgrounds that's located at GIS.
They were working on that today, I saw, yeah. Okay. And then some other miscellaneous stuff with sidewalks and that sort of thing around there. Okay.
Next summer, Phase Two will be...
Oh, taken out that stuff, okay.
Well, there'll be some interior work next summer.
Okay.
And some more outsides, more outside.
Okay. This is getting ready for that, or actually, construction of that new administrative wing is what we're talking about, that'll bump out to the south.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions? Is that all you had on that one, Dave, on 11.8?
I'm sorry?
Is that all you had on 11.8 there, the 2755?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
On the, Betsy, if you go back...
Dave, just a second. Is there more work at GIS that you're, we're talking about originally? Our budget was like 3.8 there. Is there something we're missing, or is that just our lucky day that they came in? 275?
The, the entire budget, there's, there's two phases.
Got it all. There's playground and fieldhouse, masonry restoration, fill in the commons area.
What we did, we broke that down into two phases. The phase this year is, is playgrounds, tuck pointing, the bump out. Next year is when the majority of the construction takes place in, on the interior of the building to include some HVAC work. And I think that that number came up to almost $6 million, if I'm right, Mike.
Yeah, I can't, can't remember exactly, but that sounds about right. What, what you're not seeing, I, I prepped you, Dave, if I'm wrong, but the GMP price does not, includes contingencies, but it does not include architect fees and FFNE. You've got another spreadsheet, I think, that shows that.
Yeah, you'll see that spreadsheet later on in the presentation.
Shows up later.
This is what the construction manager guarantees the construction cost to be. Less FFNE and...
But that's still one phase.
Architectural, architectural engineering piece.
Phase one works on 2000.
Statement of the Bible.
Dave, I'm sorry, what, what, in this diagram that we have here, or that Steve brought, we've got the, the floor, the masonry, the playground, and the fieldhouse for Phase One?
Fieldhouse?
Uh, heat detectors.
Remember, that was a conceptual drawing. That was before we got to design. We backed out of some of that.
There's a, there's a couple of, yeah, very small projects that we actually put off. We have to do some taping of the ceiling vapor barrier in there in Phase Two. We thought it'd be more economical to do the heat detectors at that time in Phase Two instead of expanding Phase One to include incidental items like that.
So this said 3.8 million for Phase One, but you're asking for 2.7 million because you're putting some of that work off? It's not like we're...
Well, there, there, yes, exactly. There is a...
So we're not saving a million dollars?
The filling in of the floor in the cafeteria was originally in Phase One, and that was projected at, I think, $375,000. So if you add that back in, that's gonna be in Phase Two now. We, we thought that it'd be better to proceed with that in Phase Two. But there's also fees and furniture costs that are in there as well.
Of, of the cost that we had budgeted for the Phase One project, that was the 2.862 million after we kind of split the Phase One, Phase Two. So we're actually to the good on the Phase One project by 107,000, so...
With once the final decisions were made on what we were doing.
That's correct. Scope to budget, we're actually to the good by 107,000.
May I ask you a question? Maybe I misinterpreted your comments from last month, but as far as the roadway and drop-off, I thought that we had this contingency amount, and it was, it was good enough that we could put in the roadway, put in the additional parking area, and we'd still have... we could put in the roadway, put in the additional parking area, and we'd still have 100,000, 125,000 left. Am I remembering that incorrectly?
One more left slide.
Yeah, okay, right, sorry.
We're still carrying contingency funds in each of the projects, and I don't have the first two handy with me, but you can see the breakdown of what the contingency is for this project in your breakdown spreadsheet, which is the additional spreadsheet to this page. But those contingency amounts do add up to almost cover that with the, we were under budget on this project by 406,000, which helped to make up, currently, we're showing 145,000 over budget, that's with all those alternates, with our contingency amounts more than covered.
Okay.
Yes, you're correct.
Do we have a running contingency sheet that I've missed for Phase One projects?
You would have, I don't know if you would have it with you.
Have all funds?
But that would be in an overall spreadsheet.
Okay.
We showed the breakout of this one that we're presenting tonight in the, in the contingency amount towards the bottom of the page.
Right, I see that.
200 and something, 207.
Yeah, okay.
When we count to 11.12, we'll cover a lot of that information for you.
Okay. At this time, we need a motion then to, if there's no other questions on the Phase One of GIS at $2,755,023, then we need a motion to accept the recommendation to accept the bid from O'Shea Builders for $2,755,023 for the building additions, Phase One, at GIS, as presented this evening.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Steve. And a second, please.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Susan. And call the roll, please.
Yes, Cop.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Whitezel.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. Let's see. Bid project remodel bathrooms, this is for Ball, no, Chatham Elementary, I'm sorry, Chatham Elementary.
Next item we've got is, is the bathroom modifications at Chatham Elementary. And as the administrative recommendation is to accept the, the bid from R.D. Lawrence Construction. We had two bidders on this, this particular project, RL Volantine and R.D. Lawrence. R.D. Lawrence's base bid was 149,303, and based on the low bid, we're, we're asking tonight to accept the bid.
Any questions?
This does not come out of, of bond money, this comes out of HLS.
Health, Life, Safety.
These, these bids are so close, do we always have to take the lowest bid? They're so, they're so close, is there, you know, is, do we have to take the lowest one if you feel the other one will do better, or does it not really matter?
Well, they've both done work in the district, and they're both, both have done good work in the district.
We had R.D. Lawrence on the construction project two years ago at the new school, and RL Volantine does work here almost yearly, so they're very competitive, they're both local.
Yes. I think we do have to take the lowest.
We have to take the lowest responsible bidder. You don't have to take the lowest price, but you have to be able to provide justification as to why you've chosen one over the other.
There's some exceptions to that, and that's technology, technology's an exception.
There are other exceptions, the whole bidding process is a challenge.
Sure, yeah.
But if you have to go through the bidding process, which is good, then you have to take the lowest responsible bidder, which generally means the lowest price, but there can be other factors. If you choose one that, in this case, is at a higher price, you would have to provide justification as to what your reasoning was. So you can, there doesn't appear to be any, any circumstances in this case that would choose, make you not choose the other.
Okay. R.D. Lawrence, got you. All right. If there's any questions, any questions on this at all? Then I need a motion to approve the bid of R.D. Lawrence Construction for 1,400, oh, I'm sorry, 1 million, I'm always used to millions here. 149,303 for the modifications at Chatham Elementary as presented this evening, and this money comes out of Health, Life, Safety Funds and not out of bond money. So, need a motion to that effect.
I make that motion.
Thank you, Susan. And a second, please.
Second.
Thank you, Rick, and call the roll, please.
Maddox.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Whitezel.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Yes. That's right. All right. District Office modifications, Dave.
We had four bidders bid on the masonry restoration, which includes tuck pointing and.
Your Valentine.
additions to the back end of the building. RL Volantine was low at $55,000, the architect's estimate was 53, so we feel we're within budget, and we're recommending tonight RL Volantine Construction.
Any questions?
Does that come out of the O and M fund? Does that come out of the O and M fund, or help by safety?
That comes out of bond funds.
Okay.
All right.
And that's, okay, that's part of our, what we said is part of the.
For this, this particular project, yes.
Okay.
The referendum said to equip existing buildings, which includes all buildings, so in this case, the district office was covered.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Need a motion then to approve the recommendation to accept the bid of RL Volantine for $55,000 for masonry improvements at District Office, as presented this evening.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Rick, and a second, please.
I'll second it.
No, you're second.
Thank you, Susan. And call the roll, please.
Yes, Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Whitezel.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Cop.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Anusis.
Yes, thank you. Next one, 11-11, building and custodial funds, this is the.
This particular RFP went out about a month ago, and we sent it out, we did have some initial questions, some small questions, sent the bids out, when the bids came in, there was a lot of concern about, not the pricing, but some of the ancillary information that was contained inside the bid. So we're asking tonight to redo this particular bid, take, and cancel all the bids that we've got currently.
We're rejecting all the bids.
Right, reject the bids.
And because it was, the RFP was not specific enough to get some accurate information back to be able to evaluate those bids, so.
There's some clarification that needs to take place in some of the ancillary items. Money was not the issue, it was some like training and education, the RFP.
So the recommendation is to rebid this with more specific RFP and advertising for the bid, so we need approval to do that. So I need a, if there's no questions, I need a motion then to rec, to reject all bids and to rebid this project in a clearer, more specific manner, and bring those bids back at a later date. Is that a motion?
Move.
Okay, thank you, Steve. And a second, Rick, thank you. Call the roll, please.
Whitezel.
Yes.
Worley.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Cop.
Yes.
Maddox.
Yes.
Peter Meyer.
Yes.
Anusis.
Yes. All right, and then, construction update, 6-10, or this, for the week of 6-10, I assume, right?
What you're looking at here is the project status, project number, projects, the process that they're in, contracted ex, that have been executed. Tonight, we've executed some of these contracts. I think what you're interested mostly in is the projected budget, which is the highlighted under the pre-bid project budget on the right-hand side versus the total. And if you drop down to the bottom of the page and look at what we projected in budget, which was 15,427,332 versus the 15,440,189, we're right there on budget. Included in that is the contingency for Phase One of a billion dollars. So if we run into a problem, we've got contingency to cover some of these issues within those particular projects. If you look at the FFNE line or column, you'll notice that in the building additions, we've, we've got money allocated for various portions of FFNE, furniture fixtures and equipment. In the future, you're going to see two additional columns that'll show draws and balance.
Cool.
Which will help you understand exactly where we're at each month. We've not got draws from contractors at this point, although they're starting to come in. Any question about what you see currently?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's great.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
At this point, I'd like to bring my CM up and have him talk about where we're at in construction. We did have an opportunity to take a tour real quickly and talk to you about where we're at, and then if you have any questions, perhaps he can answer.
Well, we'll start at Glenwood Elementary. If any of you have been out there, we've started moving dirt, a lot of it, and we're in good shape. As of right now, we have two of the wing additions ready for foundations, proof rolls have all passed, and they're in great shape. The third one is drying out, Unit A, it's a little more wet on that area, there's a lot more dirt to bring in. And then, as far as the roadway on the alternates, the, our subgrade is now drying, I'm praying for no rain, but the, and then the parking lot, the base bid parking lot is rocked and ready for concrete, so that schedule is moving great. Moving over to the Ball Elementary addition, we've done some interior demolition, getting ready for the overall demolition of the addition, and we have construction fences up. Here at the end of the month, we're going to be starting the big, bringing the building down, and so.
Is that still, still looking at Thursday? This week or not?
No.
Well, good, I was going to be out of town Thursday, so that's a good.
We changed it just for you.
Thank you. All right, yeah, don't tell anybody.
No, just minor setback, but we are within the schedule of the overall project, so there's, there's no concern there. And then, we're going to get started with the intermediate school, we just got approval tonight, so we'll get that rolling. I'm sure you've seen the fence up, out there, so we're staging, ready to go, but other than that, the additions are going well. Mike, do you want Mike to speak on?
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
Well, since Kerry and I were out there last week with Betsy and went through the buildings, and yeah, there was a lot of dirt being moved at Glenwood, but dirt's dirt, you know, so until we get, until we get something built on, or some foundation stuff on there. At GIS, I was by there this evening and there, or this afternoon, and they're coming right along with the, with the new playground area. They've got a lot of rock in there, and they're grading that rock out and have that done. Then at Ball is really, I mean, it looks like a demolition site, it looks like we're bringing the whole building down, just one section, because new HVAC's going on in there, we've got some roofing, we've got some wiring, we've got all kinds of stuff going on, but it, and also, the entire, it's still, they haven't put any concrete in there yet, right? It's all.
All the asphalt's.
All the asphalt on the driveway is down, it's down about six, eight inches, something like that, so that they can put the concrete in there that we've already approved, that for the bus, bus lane and the two-way traffic and that, so it's, it's coming along.
Can we get a videotape of that first, I mean, it's got to be kind of interesting to see it come down, isn't it?
We have a lot of people who want to come see, you know.
Well, we'll let everybody know.
We can have Betsy do some.
Well, can we just put it out?
Or Brian, give her a camera, Ryan.
Yeah, there you go, in the back.
I like that.
And I'm sure Joe will be out there, right, Joe?
He's got a meeting to record now.
Yeah.
And then, and then we said, once it's, once we start seeing more too, we can have the board come out, schedule a tour for you guys to see.
I know, but I'd like to see it come down.
Yeah.
It's the 28th.
Is it the 28th now?
The 28th.
Oh, it is.
Right, Dave?
20th.
No, it was moved.
No, not this Thursday, it was moved.
Minor setback.
I hadn't heard that. Minor setback. We don't like setbacks.
I know. Overall, schedule were fine.
Yes, it was early, right? You were going to bring it out.
Early were fine.
But it's, it's really coming along, and it's really kind of impressive to go look at things.
As we talk, recognize that this is remodel construction, and as we uncover walls, fixtures, we are finding that there are unanticipated improvements that we're going to have to make. And that'll be part of change requests, and that'll be part of a monthly construction meeting that we'll, we'll have onsite, so, and you'll see those as a part of our monthly presentation. Any other questions?
Any other questions to Dave? Okay. Thanks, Dave. Dave, Dave, and everybody, appreciate it, so. Moving on to Communications Roundtable.
Just in light of the, I'm jumping in on your roundtable.
No, that's okay, go ahead.
But I was hoping that we could find a couple of people who would be interested in maybe being on a construction team. Last year we had, or last time that we built, we had two board members who kind of were involved in just sitting in on the owners' meetings every, you know, month or whatnot. It's kind of a, a lot of work, but it helps.
And I'm throwing my head in on that. I sat in on the last one, I sat in on the high school ones when we built the high school.
So I don't know if anybody else is interested, but definitely helps.
So you, you want to, or you don't want to?
I want to, yes.
What, what kind of time?
Um, it's, once a month at.
We can be flexible.
You can probably pick, Steve.
Couple times, couple hours, a month.
We meet weekly, you can pick when you want, one to two a ten.
You're going to have to go every time.
How long do you, how long do you meet weekly?
It's, it wouldn't be weekly.
Two hours.
It wouldn't be weekly, it'd probably be monthly.
But if you go the monthly, yeah.
Four, four times a month.
Can we sign you up? Okay, good. Stephen, Jim.
Okay.
Can you email them when you meet, and then they can come as, you know, if they can, when they can?
If, um, either you can't make it, I volunteer.
Oh, good.
Stand in.
Okay.
Good, good. That helps. Excellent, thank you.
Anything else that you have on Roundtable?
On Roundtable, but actually, it kind of dovetails into the next line, unless there was anything else.
Well, yeah, I did.
Okay.
You guys probably recognize this. Last, last month, I was, well, we all were, I took, took everybody up on, took O'Shea up on it to attend this Leader Cast presentation, and it was well worth the day out there, not just for the Chick-fil-A nuggets at the end of the day, but it was also, they had a number of outstanding, outstanding people who, who presented out there, well, they didn't present out there, they presented in Atlanta, and it was simulcast all over the world to 200 and some odd thousand people. And they had people in there, some Jack Welch, who you may have heard of, Chairman of GE, wasn't it, yeah, and Condoleezza Rice was one of the speakers. They had a Lieutenant Commander, former Navy SEAL, a guy by the name of Rourke Denver, who was in there, who talked about leadership. Mike Sheshevsky, if anybody's ever heard of Duke University, was one of the presenters. And it was just an all-around day where they talked about leadership, they talked about opportunity to get involved with things, and how to improve, how to improve budgets, how to, you know, what's important these days in looking at, at different areas of business and how to run a business, and basically, this is a business, you know, we're a 40 million, 40-some million dollar a year business that we've got here, the largest employer They also had an Olympic gold medalist, Sonya Richards Ross, and several others, but it was a great time. If, I don't know if you guys are planning on doing it in the future again. It was out at Hope Church out on the West Side, and it was a great day. And I would encourage, if you have an opportunity next year, to, to go, because you get a lot out of those things. That's all we had on the...
Um, can you just speak further on the round, at Roundtable?
No, I might till 12.2. That's okay.
I have a couple items I'd like to bring up during the Roundtable. And I know this was, you know, approached a while ago, but I would like to look at, I would like to put our feelers out for the sale of the land. We have an expert on the board here, and he could...
Pressure's on.
He could tell us if it's a fair price. We don't, we have land. We don't need this piece of land out on Second Street. So, but we do need more cash, so that was one item of my Roundtable. And the second item is, I would like to bring forward to everyone's consideration the establishment of a finance committee. There are a lot of projects with big numbers, lots of reporting requirements, and I think maybe some of the details and hard work can be offloaded to the finance committee, and maybe help streamline the communication and other important money management ideas. So those are my two ideas for Roundtable.
Susan, that was actually what I wanted to get into next.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Because we were talking about construction committees, and, and I'd like to propose that as far as a governance structure, rather than kind of focusing on action teams that are task-oriented, to get back to that governance structure that we used to have in the district where we had a finance committee, we, you know, now have a new established construction committee. And then, you know, one in the area of achievement, as well as we currently have a policy committee, which helps too. And it's the same type of thing, where you're reviewing anything that's new and coming up, but also reviewing overall issues. So that was kind of, and we don't have to necessarily identify who that is tonight, but we could, but my idea, where Jim and I were kind of talking about it too, but is that we take the work that Larry Dirks brought to us, and we start from there on each of those groups, so that the, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Bill.
That the, each group can kind of take the goal, the overarching goal that we started to kind of draft, and we just didn't really get to a point where we tweaked them exactly where we want them, but each of those committees can take that, like the achievement goal, or, you know, in the area of finance, what we said we'd do, and, and start with those types of sharing of information, and then work through exactly what you said, which is the, kind of the nitty-gritty, and then you have experts at the board table who've gotten to work on those areas. So we don't have to necessarily decide tonight, but...
Well, I, I would volunteer for the finance committee.
I find that hard to believe.
[laughing].
Well, the one thing we have, the one thing we have to watch out is that we don't, is that as board members, we look at it obviously more, as you and I've talked, and I've talked with everybody, but more of an overall basis, instead of getting down into the dollars and cents and the nits and grits, and more of a, as Kerry said, a governance, as opposed to the doers of the, of the projects.
Correct, and in fact, I think it would be very appropriate for, you know, the board once again to reconvene, because setting expectations about what the 2013, 2014 budget should try to accomplish.
Sure.
Should be a board discussion.
Absolutely.
It's very important, and I, given the current circumstances, I think it would be well worth another discussion by the whole board about what expectations are.
Sure, that's true. Good idea. So if anybody else wants to jump in tonight, or just like Kerry or me know, if you...
Does that kind of make sense to do a finance, we have a policy, a construction, and then, I don't know what it would be called, but something such as an achievement, or, you know, academics, or however you want to word that one.
Interested in that one.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Does that make sense for those, you know, kind of those four, or is there another that I'm missing, or?
Finance, policy, achievement.
Sounds good, okay. Policy, construction. Finance and achievement.
Do we need, if, do we need some discussion about if people think, if the board members think it's appropriate to put the feelers out and up on the sale of the land?
I don't think, and you and I talked about this, I don't think that we've got any problem in selling it to somebody who's got a lot more money, who wants to pay us for...
And Patrick said he's talked, yeah, Patrick said he's talked to three people.
Have you?
That, that have some interest, so we'll bug them, we'll call them and see how much interest they have.
Had some initial conversations.
Yeah.
Asked what the board was asking for the land, and at that point, we didn't have a number that the board was setting as a desired sale price, because they were interested in...
You just texted me that.
...in the conversations.
I got something to say.
And none of them have followed up beyond that initial conversation.
See, we've had this, this ground sold twice, and they've, it's, people backed out of the sale for a variety of reasons, so, but they weren't farmers, they were, it was more for other, other things, and there's no utilities in that area, and that's a problem if, if there was going to be a building project going on there. If it's going to be farm ground, then I think we'd be willing to sell.
Well, unless there's some conflict of interest statement that I don't know about, sure seems like we have the best person on the board to help us in this regard.
No, as long as he doesn't get a fee.
Is one of the three, the original owner, or have you gotten?
The one that's laying around us.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
But I have not had any follow-up. That's a family group now.
Right.
And they kind of make decisions together. And I thought, I've set a couple of, sort of, without trying to be negative, just curious if you got any other questions, or if you're still interested, and I haven't heard a response.
Just want to come some direction.
But you have any thoughts?
I have. The other one is the current tenant, and then there was a third one that contacted me out of the blue, because they didn't leave me a name and number, they just asked, are you, and I said, yes, did you have a dollar? No, no. Okay, we'll get back to you, and then, I don't even know how to contact them, so they didn't give me any information.
Okay.
No one says.
Well, I, I think there would be no opposition to sell that land if we could get the right[1682.01]